All right, I have 6:30. I'd like to open the Planning Board meeting with the Pledge of the Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to remind everybody that in accordance to the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over Lunenburg Public Access. We'll take roll call. Everybody is present and accounted for. Is there any public comment from the board? Seeing none, is there any public comment from the public? All right, seeing none. I think I would accept the motion to go into -- we're going to take care of this first and then go on with the rest of the agenda. But I would accept the motion to go into executive session pursuant to general law, Chapter 30a, Section 21, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, namely Town of Lunenburg versus Settlers Solar at All, Worcester Superior Court, Docket Number 1785C, V. 01959-D, and Settlers Solar LLC at All versus Town of Lunenburg at All, Land Court Docket Number 17MISC000690, HPS in parentheses, where an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on litigating position of the town, and to return into regular session afterwards.
So move.
Second.
We need a roll call vote on this. Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Mr. Pragueview?
Aye.
Mr. Chenis?
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
And an aye for myself, Mr. Bittner.
Do I need a motion to enter?
Yeah, you entered back in.
All right, I'd like to reopen the planning board meeting. I don't know if the light works.
Yep.
All right, we're good. All righty, moving into our next agenda item, the minutes approval from June 11th, 2018. Does everybody had a chance to read them?
Yep.
That accept the motion.
Oh, we're doing the accepting, uh, move that we accept the, accept or approve?
Accept.
Accept the minutes from 6:11:18?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Aye.
Aye. All righty, um, the minutes approval from June 18th, uh, 2018, the executive session, was that executive session minutes?
Move we accept the executive session minutes from 6:18:18.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Abstain.
Um, the regular minutes from June 25th, 2018. Did I hit that one? Yes.
Uh, move that we accept the regular minutes from 6:25:18.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Ken.
And a move.
You have both execs.
Oh.
Paperclips.
Are these supposed to be passed around?
Nope.
And the executives, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, the executives from June 25th, 2018.
A move we accept the executive session minutes from 6:25:18.
Second.
Uh, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 I have a.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Um, I think I messed up the dates, the 6:18, 18 executive session, I don't, right, so I need to abstain from that minutes approval, and I said approve. My apologies, I mixed the two dates up.
Did he make a motion on that one?
I didn't motion it.
Okay.
I did.
Uh, but I accepted, so we shouldn't do it.
He can second the motion, though, that's just a form thing.
Okay. Good. All right, committee reports, Green Community Task Force, nothing to report.
Sorry, is that me? I think it's me.
I think it's me.
Nope, not me. Yep, sorry.
Capital Planning?
Junk.
Capital Planning has not met?
Stormwater Task Force?
Stormwater Task Force met, um, to receive the information that the 319 grant was submitted for the Upper Mopas Brook, uh, we will not know, uh, until the end of September, uh, whether or not we will be receiving funds, um, I think that was the bulk of that meeting. Yep.
All righty, Agricultural Commission?
Um, we have not met since this last meeting, we'll be meeting this week instead of next week, we typically do the third Thursday, we have to do the second Thursday this month because of quorum issue, however, we have been, um, we have solidified the, the July 30th ban stand that will be sponsored.
All right. Right. MJTC?
Next meeting is this coming Wednesday.
Open space?
Um, we have not met since the last meeting, uh, next meeting is the 25th.
MRPC?
Was canceled, the July meeting was canceled, so next meeting will be August.
And Charter Review, I don't think we received.
We did not.
No update. All righty, uh, moving on to Director's Items.
So I thought we'd talk about pot.
Yay.
Let's talk about pot.
I knew someone was gonna make that joke. Uh, so, I have with me some, I'll call them preliminary, uh, results from the survey, um, and I say preliminary because we haven't closed the survey.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, you know, I think there's been some critique of the survey, which I think is a fair critique, uh, and I think also, doing the survey in, in the manner that we uh, through the online, uh, survey tool, automatically discounts it as a scientific survey.
You could say it.
So it's.
Monkey.
So, really what we're, we're getting here is a theoretical temperature of people who are willing to take the survey, uh, and how they feel about non-medical adult-use marijuana. It's unsurprising to me, sort of the results. I, what did surprise me, uh, more than anything is that there was less opposition, uh, or less support for prohibiting, uh, all or any of them, uh, and some of the, uh, choices that people chose for where they would choose to permit things, uh, were surprising in some ways, um, but, uh, some of that may be, uh, a liberal constituency, uh, some of it may be a misunderstanding of what the zoning districts mean, uh, and, you know, I think that all kind of goes back to some of the critique of the survey. You know, clearly this isn't gospel, um, it's not a controlled, easy-to-digest survey. There's been 153 responses, so we're also not talking about a majority of any manner within the community, uh, and, you know, I think that it was fairly evident at the, the meeting two weeks ago, that the board's looking to do, uh, a dual track where prohibition is, is clearly an option, and, um, that may, you know, there may be a silent majority that is, is not participating in this, but that would be willing to show up at a ballot or a town meeting and, and vote to support those, those measures. And I think, you know, question one, um, retail is the, the most, receive the most votes, votes for the category that should be prohibited, um, but as a percentage of answering, uh, of, of respondents, I guess would be a better term, uh, you know, they, it was less than 40%, it's about 35, uh, and, you know, there weren't any other than independent testing that were under 25, so, the people who want to prohibit it are all within a, a pretty close ballpark, uh, and I don't think it's surprising that of, of them, that people would choose to prohibit that retail was the, um, the leading contender. Uh, it tends to be the most impactful from a, uh, perception standpoint, uh, and potentially from a public safety standpoint, uh, especially with the cash involved and the fact that people are actually purchasing the product. There's still security, but it's obviously less than maybe a manufacturing or cultivation facility, uh, but more than 60% of people that responded said, "Don't prohibit any of them." Uh, you know, the limit, uh, limiting the number of, of retail facilities, uh, the, you know, one to three was where 40% of respondents landed, and 152 of the 153 people who took the survey, um, you know, responded to that question, so, I, I think this is right in sort of the ballpark where, uh, the board has sort of started talking about looking. We have eight alcohol, all alcohol off-premise licenses, um, so, if you were to limit it to two, you would be over the 20%, you would avoid the ballot issue of limit if you wanted to, uh, include that as part of the regulation. Of course, there's some people who say there should be no limit and, uh, you know, just over.
Much smaller percentage than.
Correct.
Words against banning.
Correct. And, you know, there's still, um, over 30% of people who said the limit should be zero. So, there, there are people who, you know, and I, I would say that that's similar to the amount of people who want to prohibit retail, uh, so I, I don't think that's too surprising.
On the flip side, that's 68% that want to, want or more.
Correct. And then.
Yeah, so, I mean, what I gleaned from this is that, of the people who replied to this, two-thirds, two-thirds don't want any prohibition.
Correct.
And of the two-thirds who don't want any prohibition, um, it looks like almost two-thirds of them think we should have a limit of one to three. And then the other third is probably the, "Don't limit anything."
Uh-huh.
Right? I mean, if you read into it.
Right.
Uh, so, that to me kind of says that the majority of the constituents that responded to this are looking for a reasonable restriction.
Mm-hmm.
But no, no prohibition.
You know, and I think that's, that's kind of the feeling I've gotten from the board in general and the conversation is, let's put the option for prohibition out there, but let's say you can do it in a very limited sense in some ways. Uh, and I think if you sort of read through, uh, I don't want to go question by question because it makes for about as fun TV as sitting us, uh, sitting here reading drainage reports, but, I, I think in general what you're seeing is the majority of respondents, questions three through, uh, seven, of where these facilities should be located, uh, have concentrated on the commercial and Office Park Industrial Districts, uh, with cultivation being opened up a little bit more towards, uh, the Outlying District. And, and again, I, I don't think that's terribly surprising, uh, I think, uh, you know, those, those would be the places, I, I think you'd target this kind of business anyway. We've made analogies of, uh, non-medical marijuana businesses and adult uses, or I have, um, simply because there are two categories of use that are exempt from the prohibition clauses within 40A, where if you don't speak to them in your bylaw, they're not prohibited, they're allowed in the nearest, uh, category, uh, of use within your bylaw, uh, and a lot of communities, when that law changed, started shipping their adult uses off to industrial areas or heavier commercial areas that were away from residents. And I think, you know, as, and again, take your time reading through this over time, but I think that's sort of what we're getting from, uh, from this, is, is people want them away from the residential areas for, for the most part, I mean, and we're talking up in the, you know, 80% for, for Office Park Industrial in a lot of cases, and, and well over 50% for, for the other cases. And then, you know, stuff like, excuse me, square footage limits, um, you know, almost 50% of people say there shouldn't be a limit, uh, the closest to that would be almost 30% of people said there should be 500 square feet or less, uh, you know, so that's kind of like a photo map.
Did you have any IP address limitations on this or anything like that?
SurveyMonkey does that automatically, but that's a pretty easy thing to skirt around.
And how did we, uh, how did we reach out to get the, the input?
Went to the town Facebook page and it was paid, posted on the, um, the town's website.
Do you didn't send anything out with taxes?
No.
Who would decide who's the special permit granting authority if we decided?
That would be part of the bylaw.
Okay.
Uh, I, I would expect, um, and that was kind of where I was going next, is, special permit is, is well in the lead for how people would like to see this permitted, I don't think that that's terribly surprising, uh, and I also think that, um, you know, right now, the planning board is the special permit granting authority for medical marijuana facilities, uh, so it would either be a matter of shifting all marijuana businesses, medical or non-medical, to the zoning board, or having the planning board continue to do non-medical in conjunction with medical, um, you know, in the vein of like solar, where it's a special use of types that, uh, may have more specificity to it that gets tied into the site plan, and having the two done as one hearing makes more sense. And that's certainly something to think about. You know, the zoning board, uh, currently does most, uh, use special permits with the exception of telecommunication towers and solar facilities, uh, and medical marijuana. Uh, and the final, um, which I sort of found a little bit surprising was the, the cultivation, request, or the cultivation question, and, um, more than 50% of the respondents said that indoor and outdoor cultivation should be allowed. Uh, and this last town meeting, uh, the board had a big push to prohibit the outdoor cultivation for medical marijuana, uh, in all districts, and, again, 146 people who responded, uh, a majority of those disagreed and felt that outdoor should be a permitted, uh, type of cultivation. Again, you know, I think, so that's 81 of the 146 people who responded.
So the interesting thing is, the interesting thing about surveys is, they're, they're useful, but they're also very dependent upon.
Who responds.
Who responds. And so this is, you know, this is a social media, um, demographic probably.
Yeah.
Uh, because that's where it came from. One of the things that we might consider if we ever do this again, is put a couple of control questions on.
Sure.
The survey, like, "Did you attend the last town meeting and did you vote in the last town election?"
That's a good idea.
And that would determine how to correlate the results here to the voting members of the town.
Nothing to prohibit them from.
Because, I mean, it's just.
Nothing stops anybody from.
Massive amount of activity sometimes in the social media.
Make it not anonymous and see how that goes.
And then, um.
And doing it online, there's no guarantee that the person is from Lunenburg.
They may not even live here.
Not the same person using an incognito browser and logging out, logging back in, taking the same survey six, seven, eight, 12 times.
Exactly. I mean, I can go home and skew these tonight and we can come back with a completely different answer.
But again, there wasn't many surprises, I mean, that, uh, you know, industrial and business districts were gonna absorb them if we had them, you know, and that kind of thing. Summer Street.
That to me makes a lot of sense. I was, I'm a little surprised by, uh, the, uh, the, the strong support for, uh, a number of establishments in town. I would have thought that, uh, it would have been a little bit lower, um, but again, you know, it, the constituency has, has a really big, um, im- impact here.
Mm-hmm.
And, anything that we're gonna put forward has to be voted.
Correct.
At town meeting.
Yeah, and some of this is.
And so, we have to be careful about how we construct this because we want to construct something that's going to meet the needs of the town, but also meet the.
Pass.
Pass.
The other, the other thing that gets lost.
And I think we can take some of the feedback just from the survey itself and make sure that it's easy for people to understand, I mean, that's gonna be the.
The other thing that.
Run into that problem quite a bit.
You can infer from this, is that they're not educated about what's going on with this topic, because they have no problem putting it in the Village Center District, even though it would be completely illegal to do so.
It wouldn't.
Sure. Be 500 feet from the school, can't do it. The teen center's right there.
But teen center's not a protected class in non-medical, and.
It's.
It's a place where children congregate.
It's a place where children congregate.
Yeah, and it's 500 feet to the school.
That's not in the non-medical. In the non-medical, it is from an established kindergarten to 12th grade school, existing at the time of construction. The medical marijuana law says a place where children normally congregate. So, you'd have to be 500 feet from a school.
Yes.
Which would be the, I'll, I'll even go so far as to say the property line of TC Passios.
Property, I was gonna say, property or building.
I, I mean, I, I think you could probably make an argument that it's active school use, but, you know, we could say that the, the TC Passios site is still part of the high school site, so it'd be 500 feet from that property line, of which, the village is clearly more than 500 feet from there, even if you went as the crow flies.
Fine.
So.
Let's say, that's fine.
Let's say you're right.
That still puts it within reach of the kids over here, puts it within reach of the, I think if you ask most of the people in town, they'd say, "Yeah, it's kind of part of the same area and I probably wouldn't want it there," you know what I mean?
I completely agree that that, that might not be a place where most people would want it.
Oh, no, they, they say it's okay right here.
Probably visible. Why aren't your kids taking the bus down the.
40% of them say yeah.
Again, I think 150 people taking the survey, and most people are, are different, you know, different. Now, we could also, within the bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
Change the list of establishments that are subject to that buffer zone, which is what we talked about when Adam was here during the presentation.
Correct.
But, the actual law as it sits doesn't, doesn't say that.
Correct.
And I think that, you know, as long as we're reasonable with what we believe, or what we include as those establishments which are subject to the buffer, the AG's gonna have a, a hard time saying no.
I understand what you're saying, I don't disagree with any of that, what I'm saying is, this mechanism is seriously flawed.
Correct.
That's what I'm saying.
I think any.
I mean, you want me to look at, I mean, I.
No, well, you, you don't have to, I mean, take it as a vote, but I mean.
No, I'm just saying.
I think it provided some useful information, at the very least, so.
Okay.
Don't, you think it's ineffective and.
I do.
And disregarded, I mean.
Yeah. I really do.
I'm not taking it.
I think any survey is, is ineffective unless it's, it's under a control.
Yeah.
I mean.
Unless it's professionally designed, I believe, you, you're better off with somebody professional.
Even if, even if it's professionally designed, depending on how it's administered, I think is really where you.
Right. Where the rubber meets the road, yeah.
You could have the best written survey, and if you leave a pile of them on the counter at the library, and.
No, no.
We'd love to hear from you.
That's right, that's right. It's gotta be.
It raises a little bit of awareness, there's 153 people that might come to town meeting or at least aware that we're talking about this. We had three people here, Dave, last time, you know what I mean?
Yeah, no, I hear you.
If you got a special on how to get opinions, by all means, I'm all ears.
No, no, it's just, and you know who else this leaves out? Anybody who doesn't have a computer, and that's a large part, percentage of the population of this town. Shrinking, but it's still a large prob, uh, percentage of the population.
You know, and I, I think that, again, with the, this informs half of what you're doing. Because the board's already said we're going to give the voters the opportunity to prohibit. And I think that what, what this says to me, in so much as it says anything, is.
It's a guidance.
Don't give away the farm.
Right.
But don't say you can't do it at all.
Yep.
And it's good giants on how we could structure the agreement, right? So, you know, the, the commercial district, the Office Park stuff, I mean, I think some of these responses do make sense.
Mm-hmm.
And support what we were thinking. You know, being able to grow in the Outlying District, that's, uh, another one that, uh, I think we would agree, probably makes a lot of sense. The, the sizing thing.
That was sort of a.
Didn't understand the question, if the results don't make any sense.
Like tea leaves.
Well, but I, I don't, I don't know if there, there's really a need to limit size, I was, was something I put in there because I was curious if people felt that the retail establishments needed to be controlled below a certain size. Uh, I mean, 500 square foot of retail isn't, isn't very big.
No, I think you said it's a photo stand, right, so. But maybe people, you know, like, when I was in Colorado, these, these things were in areas like the Village District, where the shops along the street, there was a little shop and that's what they had there. And so maybe that's what people were thinking about these small, small shops in the Village Center District. Excluding the fact that, of its proximity to the school.
Doesn't matter.
Had a bar and a liquor store there, too.
Well, it's not that it doesn't matter, it's just not.
It's that we would love to have, uh, you know, a pub, pubs in the Village District. No one has an issue with the alcohol establishment in the Village District, and if we're saying this kind of falls in the same category as that, then, you know, maybe there's a, there's an argument to be made for it, if that's what the townspeople really want.
So I guess my, my question is, this is going to be something the planning board puts forth. I'll work with town council to work this language together, and, you know, clearly it's not going to happen right away, but it's gonna have to happen relatively quickly. to happen relatively quickly. Are what we're seeing here, you know, not, not prohibiting specific uses, but putting forward a whole prohibition or a set of regulation as the two choices, not having three or four choices? Is that the, the tax the board wants to take?
That's my proposal, but.
Yeah, I would recommend that. Yeah, you got to be ready.
Well, I'm saying at a minimum, we're taking a two-tier.
Yeah.
There's not a third tier where we're prohibiting one, two, three other establishments. So, well.
Oh, you mean like prohibit everything except cultivation?
Prohibition is going to be put forth by the Board of Selectmen, correct? So we don't all have a say in that. I mean, I want to have a bylaw ready so when the time comes and if we need it, it's there.
Are you asking me tonight to make a decision on whether I think we should have something that prohibits it based on this?
No, what he's asking is, do we come up with, do we want just a, a dual plan? First plan is a regulation plan, which we're going to do anyway. Second plan is a prohibition that if the town wants to vote to prohibit it all, that votes in. But he's asking, is there, is there a third middle ground that we want to discuss where we prohibit certain types?
For certain, only specific uses.
Like, like you say, let's have a prohibition on retail, but allow cultivation and craft and the testing and manufacturing.
You can do more than one of those?
Because those are, none of those can sell to the public.
But again, those.
How many do you have to?
You can prohibit one, all, three?
So you get, even if you only allow one use, it's not unreasonably prohibitive?
Yeah, well, it is. You'd, you'd have to write a ballot measure that prohibits, let's say, manufacturing.
And that would all be put forth.
And retail.
Through us or through the Board of Selectmen, any kind of prohibition?
I mean, the selectmen are the only ones who can put something on the ballot. I think the, the planning board has been charged with coming up with what the town's proposal to deal with non-medical adult-use marijuana is. And so I think if you went to the Board of Selectmen and said, our proposal is, this prohibition goes on the ballot, they would say theoretically, okay.
Well, okay, so that raises an interesting point. Can you cherry pick?
Yes.
So why don't we put something together where each one is its own separate thing? And if the, hear me out for a second. If the town is in favor of, yeah, we're in favor of most of this, right? Just let them vote on them individually at town meeting so they can say, oh, we are in favor of retail. Yes, we're, we're not in favor of outdoor cultivation. No.
Then it's five independent ballot questions.
Yes.
And then you would put on, what you're saying is five independent articles that add a prohibition line for each of them.
Yeah.
And then you'd write, write one bylaw.
Right.
That has an article that covers all of them.
Right.
Because that's what I was thinking, that, yeah, that we get to town meeting and like, we don't want retail, that we could just, but then.
Yeah.
How, how much are they intertwined where it's not, where we can just, where we can just eliminate one section without it affecting.
Well, right, that's what he's saying, I think, and I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm just saying.
The bylaw with a clause that says, if not prohibited, then.
We continue our, our.
You have to vote on each one.
Well, but, yeah, I think.
Can you vote on bylaws and sections?
Well, I think, I think what I was going to say is, is you're probably going to write the bylaw in a way that has general regulations that cover all of these.
Mm-hmm.
Including the buffer zone, any additional.
Use table is going to be different for the users, though.
But the use table, you can just adopt line by line. You can make, you can make revisions for the use table as a line by line sort of thing.
And it doesn't need to necessarily be done at the same time.
On the floor of the.
No, you could, you could have one more article that places retail, non-medical adult-use marijuana and has ends all the way across. And you could, and then you could have the same.
It doesn't even need to be done at the same time. You can do it after the fact. You can approve all this stuff, you don't need a use table right away. That's a, that's a, you know, that's something that we put together as a, you know, for them to.
The trouble is a lot of time between the town election.
Do need the use table.
We have to have a vote at the town meeting and town election.
But you do need the use table because the use table defines where things are allowed.
Right.
By the adoption of the use table.
Right.
That creates that.
Correct.
So it needs to be.
So we have two tables. One use table has the zones we want to allow retail in.
Right.
And then we have another use table that has retail with ends across the board.
Correct.
So one of those two could go into the bylaw.
Okay.
Based upon the vote that takes place by the town.
Correct. I'm saying, that's fine. All I was trying to say is you don't have to do it that way because you don't have a use table for marijuana now. So you can just do the bylaw and then do the use table later, can you not? Why not?
Because it's prohibited if it's not on the use table.
No, it's.
No, it's just the opposite. It's, it's allowed.
It's allowed by the most closely defined use you have to that. So retail sale of marijuana would be allowed anywhere that retail is allowed. If you don't have a use table outline of.
That's right. That's right. I'm sorry.
So what you'd probably, if you want to do them individually.
Yes.
And again, I'd want to confer with town council on this, but I think that you can do it. Then you'd, you'd write the individual ballot question.
Yeah.
So let's say, none of them pass.
Yeah.
All the ballot questions fail.
Yeah.
And you have it lined up, so the first five articles you have are the use table for prohibiting all of these marijuana. You would just pass those five over because you can't pass them. If all, all the ballot questions pass and you do each of those individually and two of them fail, then you have to have five more questions or five more warrant articles that outline where you would, where you would permit them.
Can you do it by, by amendment on the floor? And just say, we're going.
You can, because it's tied to the ballot question and the ballot question has to closely resemble.
It has to. Mirror. It can't closely resemble, it has to be exactly the same.
This is where we need to craft this in a very specific, concise way.
So, I mean, you could, you can do it that way, but you're then talking about putting 15, 16 planning board articles at the end of a town meeting and.
It'll never get there.
Someone's, someone's head is just going to explode when they get that warrant and there's.
What if we just did it assuming that they're all going to be approved and then nothing's going to be prohibited? And, and the use table is what guides where everything can go, which is just a single page, right? If some, if by chance, let's say, the only one I think really has a chance of getting voted out, town meeting, if you break them out, would be retail. Right? So, so, I'm not in town meeting in the election. So if retail got, say, 51%, says, yes, we can grow marijuana, we can build stuff.
Process it, we can test it.
But we don't want to sell it on the streets because we don't want it to, you know, we don't want that in town. So let's prohibit retail. Then can't we just amend the bylaw on the floor by saying, we're changing the use table for retail and removing it from commercial and wherever else we put it to N across the board? Can't we make an amendment like that?
I had, well, we can. I have to check with town council as far as how the use table plays into the ballot question.
Right, which is what he, Daniel was just saying.
Yes.
Yeah.
So I, I.
Well, the ballot question is simple. It's just prohibit. Right? The ballot question is, don't allow it anywhere at all it's not allowed.
But if you read the law.
Yeah.
The language of the ballot question.
Okay.
Needs to be exactly the same as the language of the town meeting article. So if you modify the language on the floor, it invalidates the ballot question and you have to do a second ballot.
This is fun.
Well, then the language on the floor would just be, the language of the ballot question would be written in terms of the use table that said, this, this is not allowed in any of the areas that the use table covers.
Okay, so, I, I think what I would suggest.
I mean, basically write the ballot question so it indicates that it's N, ends across the board for the use table.
I would say if you want to do an à la carte ballot question, where you do five ballot questions, you do one.
I'm not saying what we necessarily want to do.
No, no, I'm saying if, I'm saying if.
We're just exploring it.
To two, I'd say, I want to prohibit all.
Except manufacture, cultivate, craft marijuana and independent testing. And then have retail as a.
Prohibit everything, prohibit retail. That's how I would.
So, okay, so here's my question about that, though. If, if it comes down to people saying, yeah, but I don't want it in, I don't want retail here, how do we do that?
That's going to be.
That's.
Permit, that's going to, I mean.
No, no, no.
No, that, that.
Timeout.
Okay.
Let's go back.
You're not going to vote on that at, on an election. The only thing you're going to have to vote on in the election.
You can prohibit retail in a district.
That's.
But you cannot prohibit it from every district without a ballot vote.
I understand, so that's what I'm asking you. When we present them a ballot, not the ballot question.
Let, let me start where I was going to answer Ken's question and I'll answer your question as, as I get through it.
Okay.
So if we wanted to do à la carte, where each, each use was its own ballot question, I would say we would put five no tables on the warrant, one yes table, assuming they all pass with where you would want them to go. And then if retail gets prohibited both at ballot and by vote at town meeting, when it comes to warrant article number six, which is the use table for the outline of non, of where marijuana businesses would be allowed, you would make a floor amendment to strike the retail line from that warrant article. And yes, you can make ballot amendments on the floor. So let's say retail fails at town meeting after passing a ballot. And you get to your, we're going to let retail in the commercial and office park industrial. And someone stands up and says, no, 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 we can't have it in the commercial, do it just in the industrial. They can make that amendment on the floor and then they vote on that amendment and it either passes or fails and then they would vote on the whole package. Is that, does that answer?
It does, but see, I, I'm sorry, it's my own confusion. This is, I think I'm just confusing myself, there's so much here. You know, seriously.
It's, it's crazy.
It, yeah, I'm not sh, I'm a little un.
I'm going to lie.
Just, I know, I'm going to need a little of this before we get out of here. So, I need to understand, are we voting on, not, are we voting on?
Who's we?
Not, not are we voting on, are they voting on? Are we presenting, all right, we have the, we, listen, we have the ballot question.
We have.
We have the ballot question and we have the.
Town meeting.
The town meeting, right.
Two different, two different things.
Exactly.
Two different votes.
We also have, however, a prohibition and we have a bylaw, correct?
And prohibition only goes with the ballot?
Yep.
And the bylaw only goes with town meeting.
Correct.
That's it.
So.
Well, the prohibition will also be a bylaw.
Yeah, see.
What you'll do is you'll write, you'll write two things.
Yeah.
You'll write a prohibition for the ballot.
Yes.
You would write that same, whatever you write for the ballot is the same thing that goes to town meeting as a warrant article.
Correct.
Which you then just strike if it doesn't pass the town meeting.
If it doesn't pass at the ballot, you just strike.
We're doing the ballot first.
Yeah, because the election will be at the beginning of November, town meeting's usually towards the end of November.
Okay, so we voted on this ballot, okay? And we, and we say, we're good, we want marijuana, okay? So it's not prohibited.
Then all, then all the prohibitions.
Okay, all the prohibitions.
Have to pass over at town meeting.
Right. And, and the, also on the same ballot, right? What do we have for questions about, are there any questions about marijuana use?
No.
Okay, it's just the prohibition?
Correct.
Because right now, we have a law on the books.
Yeah.
In the general bylaws.
Yeah.
That says you cannot use marijuana in public.
Okay.
You can't sit on the street, you can't sit in a park, you can't, well, you can't drive your car, but that's a different story. You can't, you can't be somewhere that's not a private establishment. Private being like a not-public private establishment.
Yes.
Like you can't be a bad larys smoking a joint on the porch.
Yes.
You could.
Well, you can be, but you could probably be arrested.
Well, you, you get, it's a, it's a, it's a civil fine, but.
Yeah.
You're not allowed to do it.
Yeah.
You can be at your buddy Joe's house and sit in the backyard and do it.
Sure.
And no one can stop you.
Listen, I get it, right, I get that. So now we're at town meeting and we don't have a prohibition.
Correct.
So we go right over that and we are into the meat of a bylaw.
Regulatory.
So my, right.
Yes.
Now, you are allowed, even though you didn't have the prohibition, right? You are still allowed to knock that out of certain districts. Retail out of this district.
Yes.
Growing out of that district.
Yes.
So this is what, no, I understand that. This is what I'm saying. Where does that matrix show up for the people that they can understand? You're going to accept it, you're going to accept retail in these districts, you're going to prohibit manufacturer in this district, you're going to, you know, where do you?
The bylaw.
Okay, okay.
The use table, the bylaw.
We just spent two years.
Yeah.
Putting together a use table.
Yeah.
So we're going to take a little snippet.
Yeah.
Of use table and we're going to list the marijuana businesses over here.
Yeah.
We're going to list the districts over here.
Yeah.
And we're going to put yeses, noes, special permits. And that's going to be posted on the town's website. It's going to be discussed at these.
So we're going to do it the same way we do every.
Generous meetings, yes.
Of all this.
And it's going to be included in the warrant.
Okay.
So it will be mailed to everybody's home.
Okay.
And they'll get to see the little chart. Now, we did include the whole use table business that we did because it was 140 pages of gobbledygook. This is going to be five, a, a table that's five by eight.
Yeah, yeah.
So it, it's easily printed in the warrant.
Yep.
And, and people will be able to see it and digest it.
Right. So, oh, I get it. I'm just saying that you're going to, when you get to the floor with it.
Yeah, now.
That's when you're going to have everyone going. that's when you're going to have everyone going. Now everyone's going to go, "Ah, yeah, I'm all for it, but I don't want this in that district. I don't want this," you know what I'm saying? Now it's going to get picked apart.
Welcome to town meeting. I mean, that's what we got Adam for. We sort through the whole thing.
Stand up and start to speak more.
Yeah, all right, fine.
That's meat and potatoes, town meeting. I mean, people, there's always going to be someone who doesn't want this, that, or the other thing, and this, that, or that other place.
Yep.
And either the majority's going to agree with them.
Yeah.
Or they're not. And that's fine, that's the process, that's any bylaw. And so as long as we, as long as...
And I'm suggesting is that we could, if we worked at it, we might be able to organize it in a way that it could go a lot smoother. Where we could, you know, actually on the floor say, "Yeah, I like this and that, and this and that." You know what I mean? So that you get at least, I mean, this is great, but, you know, at least people who show up to town meeting.
This is...
I know, but this is, if you're, you know, what are we supposed to use as a guide? Just what we feel like?
Yeah.
Okay.
Pretty much.
Good enough. Sounds good.
People that don't show up. I mean, we do.
I think there's a couple of things, David. If you're doing the two-tier approach, you're giving people the option to prohibit.
Sure.
And I think, you know, we had, let's be honest, we had six people.
Yeah.
That came, not three. So, you know...
You missed counting, Greg.
I've just, I'm just...
Clearly. Three were here anyway.
The majority of those folks were cautious at best and in favor of prohibition at the, you know, the most negative side of what they would say if you were going to call it a positive for or a negative against.
Yeah.
And so if they represent a majority, then they have that option within prohibition. Now, is there going to be, are there people out there who are like, "We shouldn't have any regulations, people should be able to put what they want where they want it and grow their pot and sell it and make whatever they want out of it in town?" I'm sure there are. Are they going to show up to town meeting and carry a majority vote? Probably not. So I think that the five men sitting in front of me have a pretty good handle on, I was going to call you folks, but you're all men, so I can call you men, have a good handle on what in general the tone of the town is across a variety of different things. And so I think putting together a reasonable regulation bylaw, I don't think it's just what you want. I think you all have generally proven to be thoughtful about the way you put things together. And you're not just saying, "Well, this is what I want, so I'm going to do it." You, you know, you guys pick stuff apart and try and get what you think is most reasonable across the community, and I think that's really all you can do.
Okay.
And, you know, we'll have, we'll give people the chance to hear this and look at it and talk about it again before it goes on the warrant, so that if there's something that you guys think is reasonable, that someone is either thinks is too strict or not strict enough, you have the chance to hear that and, you know, and change it.
It's going to be November, right? It'll be nice and cool in there?
Well, and I think it'd probably be wise to, you know, get to a point where we've got this substantially completed, have another public hearing.
Yes.
Advertise it as much as we can, Facebook, signage, whatever, and get people in the room, and that way we can tweak it and hopefully get past.
Sounds good.
And I think that's what we're trying to do. I think ideally, we would have something in September that's, you know, a 75% draft that, you know, you guys can say, "Hey, we're substantially behind what this says."
And at that point, hopefully, we also have feedback from the selectmen, not that we get in front of them and
Yeah.
they want to make substantial changes, which...
And bylaw changes require a public hearing as part of the process.
True.
So I would say, before you have that public hearing, you want to have a public meeting that, let's, hey, here's what it is. And I think this is what you're talking about. Advertise, get people in the room, get people talking about what the draft is. And then, you know, have the actual public hearing when the board has decided we're good with what's here. And it still gives people the opportunity to come and protest, support, whatever, and you still have the opportunity to change it. But you're not going in with the thought of, "Well, we're behind this, let's hear what everybody else has to say." You've done all that, and you've made whatever changes you think are reasonable or answer those concerns and...
Five guys.
Yeah, well, I was going to say, what are you guys' thoughts on possibly adding additional meetings to get this done, because we've run into this problem in the past? I mean, I know it's summer, and I'm not saying we got to meet every week, but I'd rather start to get the work done now and then instead of at the end, trying to rush to get it done. Because I mean, that kind of happens, not rush, but...
So it sounds to me like you want to do à la carte on the ballot, or do you want to do retail and everything else?
Oh, no, retail and everything else.
Okay, so it's two questions. One prohibit retail, one prohibit all other four uses.
Yes.
And so that's two warrant articles there, which again, that's relatively simple stuff. And the regulation is where it gets meaty. So what I'll do is town council has written several of these. I'll get some examples from him, send them to you guys, have you start sort of pulling through them. I'm going to, again, infer that we're talking about a limitation on the number of retail establishments. Two would get us over our 20%. And, you know, we're not a town that's, you know, has a dearth of retail. So, you know, I mean, two, three, that's kind of in the ballpark of, I think, where we are between 20 and, you know, 40% of our off-premise alcohol licenses. That would be a general bylaw limiting that. And then we'd do a general bylaw that's going to add the 3% tax. I think that's, you know, I don't see why we wouldn't want to do that.
Yeah.
And then it's just, what do the regulations say, and where do you want to allow stuff? And, you know, I think what I'm hearing is commercial and industrial are really the areas. I would imagine stuff like processing would be limited to Office Park Industrial. I would imagine cultivation, you know, you may want to consider into outlining, but that's kind of up to you guys. Retail, I don't know if you want to limit that to industrial, if you want to allow that in commercial, or if you want to try and create an overlay district. Craft marijuana cultivator, you know, that you may want to limit to Office Park Industrial only just because they, although they're all Massachusetts residents, they can cultivate, process, everything except retail. So they're kind of like a one-stop shop. And, you know, I think when you get into the processing, I think you want that kind of stuff away from the commercial areas, because some of those tend to be tied up against residential areas or high traffic. And, you know, processing can mean a lot of different things. And I know some of the processing methods that they use are, you know, potentially hazardous.
So the more I think about this, the more I'm thinking à la carte might be the right way to go. Because I think if we include the definitions with the ballot questions, so that people have a clear understanding of what it is we're saying yes or no to in the town, we might get different results for different items. Like, people might be all for cultivating, against craft.
Sure.
Or maybe, you know, people are fine with independent testing, but they don't want a manufacturer.
Mm-hmm.
So maybe doing them all à la carte, I don't think it'll make town meeting any more difficult. It's just a matter of, we'll have to have one, two, three, four, we'll have to have five
Yeah.
articles to, for the prohibition.
And I think that...
Along with the five questions.
And then you have...
I think we'll get a much finer grain, because I think if you, if we do lump them all together, all of the uses together, then people, I don't think it would ever pass. Because you'd have, some people are like, "Well, I don't want this, but I do want that, so I'm not going to say no to all of these."
Right.
And then it ends up by right everywhere, because we don't have a passed bylaw.
No, no, I think what Ken's saying is that the prohibition would never pass.
We should give the town the ability to prohibit based upon the use, is what I'm thinking.
Right. And I think that, you know, it's five articles for the prohibition, and then you just do one for the restriction, and you just make floor amendments based on whatever passes.
If anything does get prohibited. Like, let's say craft gets prohibited, but nothing else.
You just make a floor amendment to that.
We make a use table for craft, and we say, "That changes to all numbers." Because of town election.
Now, just to clarify, the ballot is only if we want to restrict less than two or outright of retail?
No, the ballot is for any total prohibition of any...
Because we're a yes town, I thought that was...
Any, anything that you're completely prohibiting. Retail, cultivation.
Okay.
Any of the businesses that...
So if we say, "Hey, we're fine with retail, and we're fine with cultivating, but we don't want these craft marijuana joints in town," you have to have a prohibition, it has to be a ballot question.
So this is what I was trying to get at, this is what I was saying before. So what is the time difference between the vote and the meeting?
Oh, it's restricted.
It's like four weeks, so...
So can we basically, essentially, use it as a survey for ourselves and say, you know, add questions?
No, because your bylaw's already in the warrant.
There's no time for you to do that, okay? That's unfortunate, because that would have helped.
But we can, we can get a moratorium until next town meeting.
We can have a moratorium. We could do a moratorium. Because then you could, can you use the vote still? Because if you get the voting information from the voters, that's like as good as town meeting, you know what I mean?
But I don't think it is.
You know what I mean?
It's only a special election, so, I mean...
You know what I'm saying?
Well, it's a congressional year. I mean, this is a national election.
Yeah. You'll get a good turnout. So it may be more information.
I don't know, though, I...
I think we can structure it...
You think the survey monkey's the way to go?
No, no.
I think we can structure it...
What I'm saying is that I don't think everybody that votes goes to town meeting. We...
No doubt.
In an election year, we get...
I am fairly confident that everybody that goes to town meeting votes.
Correct.
Right.
But if you get 2,000 people who vote, and only 150 of them come to town meeting, we have 150 people here. It could be the same 150 people here who come to town meeting, and there could be...
Oh, my God, so are you saying that the town could vote to prohibit retail?
And then town meeting could vote to not support that? Correct.
Ah, okay, yeah.
So it's not a slam dunk
Right.
that if the ballot passes, that it's going to pass at town meeting.
No.
It's a two-tier approach, and that's why they do it for yeses.
Yes, I understand.
Then we can bring it to town.
Correct.
Well, I'm not looking at it being a binding referendum, I'm looking at it being a question. Would you like to see this kind of marijuana use in this district? This kind of marijuana use in, you know what I mean? Just informational, and then we can take that information...
Like that on the ballot.
Yeah. What do you mean? You can do whatever you want, it's our ballot. Not the referendum, not the ballot question. You following what I'm saying?
No, not at all.
I do, you... Could you do that? Yes. How many people? I'd skip that. I wouldn't even fill it out.
Fine.
And I have a feeling that most people, except people who feel incredibly strongly, would just be like, "You know what? I don't want to fill out six ballot questions that are just kind of, 'Hey, what do you think?'"
Okay, yeah, you're right. They drill all the way down there for the one question. You're right.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that you could do that, but that means we have to add the moratorium. So the moratorium then gets extended through July, and maybe that passes, maybe it doesn't. We could do a non-binding. Yes, yes, you could.
That's all. But, nope, if everybody's all good with what they've got, I'm good.
I think we need to keep it as simple as we possibly can. At the end of the day, just so people have a clear understanding, and it's confusing, to say the least, and...
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we should structure, we should structure the primary bylaw around what we think the town is, what we think is in the town's best interest and what the constituents that come and participate in our meetings are indicating to us, right? And we can certainly, you know, do like we did when we were doing the village district, call for public participation, try to get more people to come and discuss the issue. So that as we craft the overall bylaw, I would think we would have a pretty good pulse on the use table and the restrictions that we want to put on it, how many we want to allow, and all that. I would think we'd have a really good feeling for that as we construct the bylaw. Then I think of the prohibition as more of a formality. Like, we want to offer that up to the town. The awkward thing is, you know, you go to town, you go to... You go to the election, and you vote to prohibit, say, retail use in the town, and let's say 80% of the town says, "Yes, let's prohibit retail use." But then you go to town meeting, and it doesn't get prohibited. It gets allowed. It just creates a really awkward situation.
That's the way it's done, though.
I didn't really know that. So really what, really what the vote is, is the request to put the article on the town meeting.
You can do it either way. It doesn't matter...
Well, it is, because you're not actually voting to allow it or not. You're voting to allow it to be voted on.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, so that's the way it should be worded. So everyone understands that if you want it to come out the way that you're voting,
Come to town meeting.
You have to come to town meeting.
And there's...
Because that's when it's actually going to be decided. So what you're deciding in the ballot is whether or not we're going to ask the question at town meeting.
Mm-hmm. And we could do it the other way around, where we did it at town meeting, but then we'd have to wait until May to do the vote. So you can, it doesn't, one doesn't have to come before the other. You can do it whichever way you want. In order to make it to our moratorium deadline, the vote would come first, because the ballot is, you know, the first Tuesday in November. And town meeting is generally after that.
Yeah, this one's, whatever, it's going to be an ugly one. You know what I mean? So we do what we can.
I think we just worded correctly, said that we're saying...
And there are requirements about how the ballot gets put on there, and town meeting is supposed to, or town council is supposed to include a statement, and, you know, there's requirements about what that says, and...
I just think we need to make it clear to people that if they want it to come out the way that they're voting, that they really have to go to town meeting, because it doesn't matter really how you vote. Either the question's not going to be on there, or either the question's going to be brought up or not.
It's a two...
You don't guarantee that it's going to get voted the way that...
It's a two-part vote for everybody, yeah.
You say, "Yes, I want the question to be asked."
Yes.
And then the question's asked, and you say, "No, the answer is no." It's like, well...
You know what?
90% of the people said, "Ask the question," but then 60% said, "No."
It could very well happen.
Well, and if it passes by 51% at the ballot, and it passes by 51% at town meeting, it doesn't care.
And it, you know what?
It's a two-thirds vote.
It does make sense.
It's a zoning bylaw.
So the bylaw has to pass by two-thirds.
It does make sense, because you do, you know, you have to respect the fact that you go to the town meeting and you have a debate there. You know, I feel more comfortable about that. After a debate, you get, you come to whatever the conclusion is.
All right.
A more appropriate conclusion.
So I think we decided tonight that we're going to have five questions. The questions are going to be worded such that the vote to prohibit will be brought forth at town meeting, and then the detail of what the text of the prohibition would be would be in the actual ballot question. Because they have to match, you said.
Correct.
So you basically say, "Do you want the following question to be allowed at town meeting?" And then that's, there's the item. And you can vote no, and then it won't even be allowed at town meeting.
I mean, there's a lot of paper here, but I think that this thing that we got at the last meeting with the green pages is very descriptive and would be ideal to distribute as an explanation.
Yes.
Because it touches upon, it touches upon the restriction from the children places. It talks about different tiers. It talks about exactly what this stuff is, exactly where it can go, and exactly what you need to do, and exactly what the requirements are, because we were a yes town. So I think that...
Yeah, it's much more clear than the stuff from the state.
And it details what the different types of establishments are and what they can and can't do.
Yep.
And I think it's important for people to understand that most of these, actually, all the establishments, except for retail, can't sell to the public, right? So, you know, you can say, "We fully support cultivation of the product in the town." It doesn't mean you can go to the farm stand and buy it, right? So there's no, that's a retail use case, which is, you know, it's clear in here that the only time that product can transfer into the hand of a consumer is via the retail use case. All these other ones, don't touch.
Consumers at all.
It's also clear, I think it was in this package, that retail is the only one that you can actually recoup funds from, because it's based on sales tax. And so...
Well, you recoup funds from all of them for the first five years through the host community agreement.
Yeah, through the host community.
If you can prove costs for...
Well, they generally will sign that right away. And so they're going to give you what you asked for at the beginning.
For the first five years.
In...
It's ongoing. If you can then prove ongoing costs, you could recoup those as well. You get that time to sort of set up your accounting procedures.
Well, and I think that there's a huge unknown to what these businesses bring to a community, positive or negative. I mean, there's obviously jobs involved. You know, I don't know what the value of these buildings, as far as new growth, as far as personal property, ongoing tax benefit, how many vehicles they bring in for an X-size value, what they do to the property value, do they, you know, denigrate it, do they raise it? You know, so there's no way to account for those costs now, Um, you know, so, there's no way to account for those costs now, cause no one's ever done this before. In 10 years, that's going to be a different story-
Yeah.
-in theory.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so, I, I think that there's probably some latitude given at the front end, uh, for, you know, host community agreements, and just, just take the 3% and go away, and we're going to do our thing, and in 10 years, it's, their people are going to be much tighter about that kind of thing for, for a new establishment.
Sure.
Well, we've got this data, and this data, and this data, um, and in five years, you're right. You, they're, they might not be willing to say, just keep the 3%, they might say, well, but really, we're only causing you three-quarters of a percent of-
That's right.
-of, of impact.
All right, so, is that a good jumping off point for tonight? Everybody feel that we're rough?
Yeah, so what are we going to do for starting to craft the document? Are you going to start to put together the use table with the definitions and-
Yeah, I mean, the definitions are pretty-
Right, we're just going to copy the-
Yeah.
-staying ones?
Yeah, and, and I'll get some bylaw examples, so you can start looking at, at regulation sort of stuff, and, excuse me, I have, I obviously have some questions for town council, um, as far as the à la carte and all of that kind of stuff. And I think he's going to, you know, as much as bylaws are fun, uh, I think I'm going to need a little bit of guidance on this one, um, as far as expanding the list of buffered establishments, um, you know, that kind of stuff.
All right. Is that good? Move on?
Sounds good to me.
All right, um, notices and communications, everyone's board has scanned all of us. Um, meeting schedule, all board meetings are held at Town Hall, 6:30 PM unless otherwise indicated. Um, do we have anything on the next three meetings, other than, was in there an A and R or something, but other than that?
Yeah, it, I mean, no one will hear it.
Marijuana bylaw is.
Yep, marijuana, marijuana.
Pretty much.
Yeah, and opportunity for us to get some work done on it.
Yeah.
All right, is there any public comment from the board?
Yes. Um, can anybody tell, you know that big thing they use on the side of the road with the chains, and they, and they tear up, yeah, what's that thing called?
Forest tree mower.
Yeah.
Forest tree mower? Yeah, do they send out, does anybody know if they send out notice to people before they do that, or they just do it? As a matter of course.
Worry about your hydrangeas.
Yeah, no, not mine, it killed somebody else's, one of the, one of our constituents, and, uh, she was pretty bent out of shape about it, so I said I would find out.
On a town road or a state road?
No, it's a town road.
What about a scenic road? Are they required to get a permit?
Nope.
No?
No.
Anything six, nope, anything six inches or under is, is fair game, so you can cut all the little twig, um, saplings and whatnot you want on a scenic road.
They don't have to notice anybody that they're going to do it? No?
I mean, and again, I mean, that's a-
It's a yearly thing, so.
And it's a, it's something that the DPW does, it's an operational thing. Um, if, if plants were killed, um, it would be a complaint that would go to them, and it would be a matter of, were they on-
Sure.
-the town's property, were they on your property?
Yep.
Uh, and, you know, if they were on your property, then there's probably a, a proof requirement, and, uh, and, you know, if it's, hey, you know, you chopped my plants a little too much, can you watch out next year? Maybe that's a different conversation than, you owe me $5,000 for new plants.
Sure, yeah, exactly. No, that's why I thought notification would be good, cause then they could have that conversation before the damage is done, that's all. That was my only comment.
All righty, uh, any public comment from the public? Seeing none? Um, ongoing items, Asian Imperial Restaurant?
Uh, I did talk to the owner today, and we looked at the plans together, and I've been over there, and the remaining pavement is within the town's right-of-way, uh, so I'm going to speak to the DPW director about, uh, what potentially can be done. Uh, I suggested that it would be better if she could encourage people to not park there, and she said, oh, well, it's usually just me and, and my employees, and I, I don't know that that's necessarily the case, and even if it is, it's not, uh, the safest place to park, so, um, we're making-
You mean as a temporary fix, and then a more permanent one? Cause I mean, they can put cones up now, or something.
They could, yeah.
To block it out.
The, the more permanent fix will be something-
Well, even if they put a, roll rocks, it's phenomenal.
That's why they left it there, because it was within the town?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you look at the plan, you can see it's in the town right-of-way.
I see.
And-
Well, they could just put a curb, right?
That would have been the permit to apply for, right? Work within the right-of-way.
I, I think if they had pulled the curb line and filled it with stone, the DPW wouldn't have noticed.
Of course.
Uh, because, uh, the radius that they have there is filled with stone, and that is within the town right-of-way. So I, I, I just, I think it was probably a, a misunderstanding of sorts.
I missed the issue. What was the issue?
Uh, if you, at Asian Imperial, on the, the driveway apron from the house that was demolished to make room for the new parking lot, uh, the area within the right-of-way remains, uh, and it's about four car lengths, or car widths wide, uh, and there are frequently cars parked there.
That need to back into-
Electric Ave.
13. Well, do we want, I mean-
Sometimes they stick it into 13.
Entrance to the parking lot is the full.
We let that for years until the building does something.
The entrance to the parking-
They're sticking into 13, sometimes.
Comes from the-
F-350 sticks out two feet into the roadway.
The driveway for where the house driveway was-
Yep.
-that apron is still remaining, but you can't get into the parking area, it's like a separate, small parking area within the right-of-way.
Oh, I see.
And there's enough depth to it-
I didn't see that when I was there.
-that a car can, can park there.
And if someone gets creamed because it is the right way of the town-
Correct. And, and that's-
Well, that's, do we want to write a letter to the DPW on behalf of the planning board for them to do something about it?
Sounds like a good idea.
How about I speak to him?
Okay.
Uh, you know, because she, she was in today, and we talked about it, um, I expect you'll see her with a request for a de minimis change in the next couple of months.
All right, well, yeah, but if, I mean, it's not her responsibility, it's the town's responsibility, then-
Correct.
We have the ability to fix it, we should fix it.
Right.
So wait until something happens.
I mean, if you want to vote to send a letter, you can, I, I-
Not to her, to the-
No, I, I, yes.
But you're going to have a conversation with them.
Correct.
All right.
We got our next meeting to talk about it.
Okay.
I, I, I would like to mention that I did have opportunity at the farmer's market this past weekend to speak with the two of butters that had come to that, um, Alan and Robbie, and they said they are very happy with the, uh, the results, and-
Her spotlight is gone.
Yeah, yeah, it is. Uh, no, it came out nice, it's really very nice. My only problem is that, you know, cars sticking out into the traffic.
All righty, uh, Village of Flat Hill Drainage and Enforcement?
I received a response from the enforcement letter, uh, I saw it today, I believe it came in on Thursday, um, and they are committing to perform the required maintenance by the end of September. Uh, so I think that's a, I mean, that, that's a commitment to do so, um, so I guess it'd be revisited in September.
Okay.
Or, I guess October, since they committed to the end of September for, as a completion date.
Is there any more movement on the board's selectmen, or is that just, we only did what our limited ability to do something?
I spoke with the town manager, and she's looking for an update, so I, you know, I haven't written that yet, but it'll be, that will be my response as far as the update.
Okay.
And then, um, if they have other things that they, they choose or wish to do, um, that would be up to them.
Uh, Board of Appeals, I don't think we have anything from them.
No.
Sign by law, and economic development?
Uh, I expect that in the near future, we'll be hearing from Aaron Chapman of MRPC about the permitting guide.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if you have thoughts, after having looked through them, having read them, whatever, uh, I believe she gave you all business cards, don't hesitate to email her, uh, please just CC me, so I can be aware of, of what you guys tell her, so when she brings me something and I, I say, don't, why did you do that? She can, she doesn't say, but they told me to. Um, or if you want to send them to me, and you want me to collect them and send them to her, I'm happy to do that as well.
Okay, will we get copies, or are you going to post a version of it?
When, when I get something, she'll, yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll go through it, and we'll bring it up here, and, um, yeah, I, I have no intent of telling her it's great or not great.
Okay.
I, I'm merely a conduit of, this is, this is what it is, and-
Where are you at with the sign by law stuff?
Um, the, the complete rewrite, or, or the, the minimal, the minimal change to the commercial district.
Any improvement.
Um, we, we did have a draft of the commercial district, uh, I think it kind of died on the vine in the rush to finish the use table. Uh, I can send that back out to you guys, and we can look at adding that as part of, uh, the November, uh, we had talked about, I think it was 12 square feet and under, or 20 square feet, I don't know if it was, was it 12 or 20?
I think it's 12.
Yeah, adding a standard.
25 feet off a property line-
Yep.
Uh, by right, without need for site plan approval within, I think commercial district was the only one, uh, since we've eliminated the retail commercial.
Yeah, I think it's 20 feet, which is-
Uh, yeah, it, it's all written down.
Yeah.
Um, but, uh, yeah, I can send that back out.